The meeting to order. All three of the commissioners are present. The notice of the meeting was properly posted November first. Is it my turn? Did it go from D one to D two? Okay. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for all the safety that has been granted to our employees while working in hazardous conditions. We'll ask that you be with all those displaced citizens throughout the county that are suffering from the victims of the tornatic activity. We'll ask that we'll continue to have safety over our employees as they manage to go through these winter, uh, these weather events and also for those who are trying to put their lives back together in their homes. In your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there approval of the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any change to the blanket? Chantel? No change? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the blanket?
Motion to approve.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. The bid?
We have one recommendation today for bid CW two five zero eight seven dash two. This is for our carpet and flooring, uh, materials and services. We received three bids. Um, we are recommending award to the low bid, which is Brian's Flooring as our lowest and best.
Okay. Motion that we accept the recommendations of the purchasing agent.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any individual consideration to the consent docket?
Motion to approve consent.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. District one?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, as everyone knows, uh, Veterans Day is approaching and we wanted to take an opportunity to just recognize, uh, the veterans, their families and all the sacrifices that they, they make for us, have made, continue to make. Um, on behalf of, um, not only our county, but our nation and our state. Cody's going to read a, a resolution real quick and, uh, basically what we're asking is that we would illuminate the annex green in support of our veterans and also asking our citizens that they would, uh, hang a light green in support of our veterans as well. And, and not only the service that they, they've done in their armed forces career, but the service that they continue to provide, whether that's in our classrooms, as members of, um, milit-, uh, police or fire department or other civic, uh, groups. So Cody, thank you.
Yeah. Uh, this is a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans. Whereas green is the color of hope, renewal and wellbeing. And whereas green light is a term commonly associated with forward movement. And whereas green light a vet is a campaign to establish visible nationwide support for our veterans. And whereas the residents of Oklahoma County have great respect, admiration and the utmost gratitude for all of the people who have ser- selflessly served our country and our community and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas our veterans continue to serve our community in the American Legion, veterans of foreign wars, religious groups, civil service positions, our classrooms and many other community organizations. And whereas Oklahoma County seeks to honor these individuals who have made countless sacrifices for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all and upon separation of service have continued their tradition of serving others. And whereas Oklahoma County, in appreciation of this service and sacrifice, our veterans have given, believe specific recognition should be granted to our former United States military personnel. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oklahoma County Board of County Commissioners, on behalf of the citizens of Oklahoma County, does hereby honor and thank our veterans for their service and sacrifice on behalf of our nation, state and county. Be it further resolved that the Oklahoma County NX will be illuminated in green to recognize the importance of honoring all those who have made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve our freedom and that the Board of County Commer- Commissioners encourages all residents to display a green light in their place of business or residence from November fourth to November eleventh, twenty twenty four. Approve this fourth day of November twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Cody. That new resolution.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As always, thanks to their service. Mr. Mason?
Good morning, Commissioners. Welcome back, Commissioner Mon. We're glad you're here. Um, as you know, we've been working on the design for the new jail and we're prepared. The committee's recommending we proceed from the CD phase of design to the DD phase of design and Stacey's going to provide a little detail.
We've seen the exterior. Exterior many times. This, I sent you, give you a brochure this morning. It kind of details a lot of the interior spaces. Uh, that can kind of concludes the design development phase and, uh, we're ready to move into CDs, which is construction documents. Um, then we'll be able to get these plans on the shelf and, uh, ready for bid whenever we can find the, the financing situation, get that resolved. We'll be in CDs for about six months, so, uh, really need to get, uh, get moving in that direction if, uh, you're happy with the design development to, to this point.
Questions? Comments? Is there a motion?
Any questions? Mr. Mason, what was the, uh, recommendation of the citizens oversight?
Our recommendation was we are happy with the DD phase and we feel it's complete.
Okay.
We're ready to go to CD and start pricing this thing. Positive, firm pricing.
Sounds good to me. I'll make a motion that we accept the, um, recommendation of the citizens oversight committee and move to design and development.
I will second. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mason, for coming down here on a rainy morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Emergency management, this is just approving Greg Whitworth to replace Miranda as the receiving officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Engineering?
Item sixteen is a change order on one of our ARPA projects down at the existing jail. We redid the loading dock down there. It was completed, but then a vendor, uh, trucking vendor had nothing to do with the project, actually hit the new door. So we have to repair that. And, uh, this is the change order to get that repair made. Soon as this repair is made, that project will get closed down.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Item seventeen is a long awaited project to redo our Kraus Center property. Uh, we're doing that with three different funding sources. Uh, the jail bond fund, it was the sheriff's portion, uh, some ARPA monies and some public building authority monies. The entire campus will be touched. We'll be doing remodel work on all the buildings. Uh, some of the parking lots, utilities will be extended, new fencing around the perimeters. Uh, pretty extensive project, uh, over seventeen million dollars. That's a guaranteed maximum price from the contractor. And we would like to begin construction this month, the month of November, upon your approval of this contract today. It's, you had a similar item on, uh, PBA since it's a three-way agreement commissioners, PBA and, and the contractor.
Mr. White's here. Do you have anything you want to say? Okay. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Eric?
The first item before you is a replat of Coffey Creek Farms that was heard by the planning commission on October the seventeenth. Uh, this was, this is an application that was brought forward by one of the members on the board, actually, Mr. DeFuria. Uh, what he's wanting to do in this particular case is there are five lots that make up this plat currently. Uh, four of those lots are currently two and a half acres and one of the lots is five. He is shrinking four of those lots to two acres and making lot nine larger to where it is now, seven acres in size. Uh, the planning commission unanimously approved his request. Obviously he was not, he was excluded in voting since he is on the board and it's his project. Uh, that's all that I had in regards to that particular item unless you had any particular questions.
Motion to approve based on recommendation.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Um, item nineteen is item to appoint Gary Jewell. Uh, he's an appointee for district one. He is going to replace Ms. Jennifer Craig, who had to leave the board. Uh, her, uh, tenure expires on June the second, so he'll be, uh, twenty twenty seven, so he'll be finishing out her term. And then if he would like to continue on from there, then we can reappoint him at that point in time.
Yep, I'm very thankful, uh, Mr. Jewell has agreed to do this. You made, no Gary, he worked for the Oklahoma City Public Schools, so when we do special projects, uh, with them, he's very involved in that. Additionally, Gary's been active coming down to planning commission meetings and participating, uh, regarding things of concern, uh, in the area that he'll now, uh, represent on the board. So I move his approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, the last, yes, thank you. Uh, the last planning item is a resounding that took place on October the seventeenth. Uh, this application was by Ms. Tamarit Jackson. She wanted to rezone a portion of a plat that was recently done in this area. Uh, this is, this particular piece of property is located off of Southeast twenty ninth, uh, probably about a half mile east of Henny Road on the north side. Uh, the plat was originally just two lots. Uh, this particular lot is the larger of the two lots, approximately five, little over five acres in size. Uh, she was rezoning this particular piece of property to CG, which is Commercial General. Uh, the property that is adjacent to her to the east and west is actually zoned industrial at this particular point in time. And as you go back west towards Henny Road, there are quite a bit of, um, Commercial General zone, uh, pieces of property that haven't been developed at this point, but they are sitting and there's a couple of PUDs that are in the area that are commercial in nature as well. So I think her request fits into what's been going on in that particular area over the last few years, probably five years or more now, uh, that, that area's been turning, uh, quite a bit of commercial, uh, as far as zoning over the years. The planning commission unanimously, uh, approved her request. Uh, she is here if you have any other questions. Uh, the plans for the particular piece of property at this point is to do, uh, retail, typical strip type of development strip center. That's what they have in mind at this point in time.
Okay. There's no questions, I'll move the item.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming down, ma'am. All right, Commissioner comments, district one?
None, other than, uh, perhaps nearing new business, we can get an update from Mr. Barnes on, uh, the activities over the weekend and potentially, uh, what we may be facing this afternoon.
Three?
Nope.
Mr. Barnes?
Good morning, Commissioners. Obviously, uh, kind of crazy little busy times. We continue damage assessment. I've actually got crews in the field right now continuing with the damage assessment out in the Harrah and Choctaw area primarily Harrah and Incorporated areas, so we'll have greater information on that today. They'll obviously be pulled off for severe weather issues and then re-enter the field following that. Uh, working very closely with those jurisdictions out there. Sheriff's Office has been a tremendous help. Sheriff Johnson has been on site and very much engaged and, uh, that's going quite well. Commissioner Mon was out yesterday and we had some contacts with the state office, with the governor, with, uh, lots of different people and the, uh, the local, uh, mayors are involved and we're looking into the brush issues, the, uh, vegetative debris, the burning, the removal, those kinds of things. We've still got a couple of questions we're going to have to clarify between FEMA and the state. Uh, they've apparently changed some procedures from what we're accustomed to in previous years. I don't think they'll be detrimental to us at all. However, we are trying to move forward in an expeditious manner while protecting the drainage capabilities and protecting the right of ways. And so we're working with them and I'll be getting clarification hopefully today and hopefully the next event, which we're looking about, uh, a dry line setup at about eleven o'clockish, um, out west and then potential impact in here in this area, uh, roughly noonish. We'll see as things transpire. A lot of that depends on what's going on right now. Uh, but we'll be evaluating that and hopefully we won't be adding to the debris issue that we've already got out east. Uh, but we are keeping, uh, a close watch on that as far as procedurally and what type of, uh, DEQ approvals for sites and all those type of things that we have to juggle and keep in order. We're definitely moving forward on that. I greatly appreciate the assistance and cooperation from all three of the district's offices and in contact Judge Ogden this morning. Those folks have been great. Um, also, uh, touch base with Mr. Sullivan this morning. We're moving forward, get the building open because we know we had some issues, uh, as jurors were arriving, people on the road. So lots of moving parts today and certainly more to come. I'd entertain any questions you may have.
Okay. And David, on the, on the debris removal, I'm trying to think back to previous events. You, you mentioned things have changed, uh, somewhat. The vegetative matter is one thing, but construction debris and other materials will have to be disposed of in a different manner. Am I remembering that correctly?
That's correct.
And that's one of the things that you're trying to line out?
Absolutely.
How that will occur?
Okay. And part of the discussion that we had on site with the representatives from the jurisdictions out east yesterday, uh, was having staffing available, whether it's county staffing or hopefully it will be local jurisdiction staffing available on site to segregate that debris so we can remove that. But from DEQ EPA perspective, the burning of vegetative debris is, is approved. But household materials, uh, construction materials, those type things, uh, will have to be separated from that.
Okay. Thank you.
Judge, would you like to say anything? I know that, just to clarify, Judge Ogden and Barnes and I spoke this morning and the important thing that we saw this morning was getting the jurors in selected and then I'll let you explain the rest. Yes. So we only had, uh, two civil panels, two juvenile panels and one misdemeanor. So what we did is we went ahead and, uh, signed those jurors, but then immediately excused them to come back tomorrow morning at night. So th- those that are juvenile will go to juvenile, those that have come here will come here. Uh, and, uh, just in terms of keeping, uh, the course open today, I wanted to hear from Mr. Barnes in terms of the prospects and in terms of the weather, uh, and what should happen there. Uh, because it's a jury week, then, you know, it's lighter, but we still have, uh, we still have dockets on the first floor. We still have, uh, drug court and DUI on the second floor, along with, uh, mental health courts, uh, on the sixth floor, small claims. So we still have a lot of business here, but, um, if we were to consider, uh, closing, then if we were to do it at a certain point in time to allow the judges the opportunity to advise, uh, their, uh, the people that are appearing before them to continue the matters, et cetera. But, you know, I, I think the biggest thing is just knowing what the prospects are for today and, uh, and going from there because, you know, it is a, I know it's a, a moving line and I know it's, uh, uncertain, but I'm, I'm more interested in hearing from Mr. Barnes than myself.
So with, uh, the amount, you know, my thought and in, in our discussions this morning was the amount of kids that are, that are home alone and everything, uh, that being important.
Yes, sir.
Um, I also spoke with, uh, Mr. Sanderson this morning and in talking with him, any closure that we have here will not affect the election board. They will be open until five o'clock, so anything that we do will, again, will not affect the election board.
And along Commissioner Davidson's lines, my concerns are that, uh, we not wait to make this decision, that we, um, prepare as if the worst is going to occur and hope for the best. But the longer we wait to make some determination as to whether or not we're going to, uh, allow our employees and those that are in this building to go home, the greater risk that they're in traffic when those storms do come through. And I think we can all remember a time a few years ago where, uh, severe storms impacted the metro and their, the, the highways were jam packed. So my preference would be that we would, we would move quickly and err on the side of caution. I'm, I'm more than willing to accept somebody being critical of me for being cautious.
Thank you for that, Mr. Blau. We actually have our in-house expert, which I put more credibility than sometimes local meteorologists with, who, uh, is on his way in here right now. In fact, he's probably already downstairs. And following this meeting, we'll be getting together to discuss, uh, what he sees, keeping in mind as Judge Ogden, uh, referred to and inferred that there is a moving target and we certainly will, uh, be evaluating those factors and what's going on right now will impact that as well. Uh, I too have a tendency to go towards taking the safer route. Uh, there is, uh, significant difficulty, I understand, in making that decision at various times because of the activities at Oklahoma County, uh, in preparation for voting data. I mean, there's just a lot of moving pieces, parts, um, giving people an opportunity to make that move early, particularly those with children and issues at home. That's, that's a big issue for me as well from the public safety perspective, and I definitely know that you as a board are interested in public safety first. That is a responsibility here and I'll have to lecture on that. So we'll be, uh, having a meeting immediately following this meeting to get the latest, greatest information. And, uh, we'll be making recommendations and hopefully determinations quickly thereafter.
Thank you.
Judge, we, and Mr. Warren, you both can probably speak to this. We got a VPO docket as well. Do you know how long that takes to get through and is there anything that's, um, um, that's dangerous for individuals that are seeking those?
So the, any emergency VPO that's currently in place remains in effect until the next business phase that, but so, but we do have that gap. If there's people that are applying for VPOs this morning, then, um, you know, we do have a duty judge that can handle those, uh, even though, uh, uh, we, if, if, if we were to close, the duty judge can handle the emergency VPOs.
Mr. Warren, you got anything to add?
I think everything's pretty much been said, but understand that if you close, I've heard that you might leave it up to the officers to close. If that happens, that's a different level than my people. My people will have to be here because basically we are the doorway to the courts. And so for the VPOs to be filed, if people come here and we're not open, if the building's open, they, they wouldn't understand. And so for people to get the justice, then we need to be open or close. Either you close all offices or close none.
Yeah, I, I don't think that there's any doubt about that. That's why I was trying to clarify on the VPO and how quickly we can get some of that done. It's, I wholeheartedly agree, the confusion of closing part and not all is, is, is a bad idea. No, I'm with you.
Are y'all going to make a motion? Is there something you're wanting to make an action on now?
I think we were going to all kind of sit and wait and, I mean, it's up to Judge Ogden and, and Mr. Warren and, and Mr. Barnes. I mean, to take the recommendation of essentially our weatherman that's not concerned about ratings. And probably move from there. I mean, we've, we've still got some business to conduct here. I don't know that we need to make a decision right this second, but in the next probably twenty minutes, we probably should. And it might be one of those things that, um, we could suspend this meeting and move to PBA, get PBA business done, meet with Mr. Whitworth real quick and then make an educated decision at that point. But that would, and then involve, um, judges representative and the court clerk and, and make that decision.
How long do you need, David? Mm-hmm. Okay. Um, under, if there's no motion, then under kind of this or Commissioner comments, either one, there's approximately twelve miles of district two that had some impact and we were out there surveying. My crew started around three in the morning yesterday and I got, joined them later in, in the morning and, uh, limited capacity admittedly to being able to survey it directly, but I did take a tour through the areas and a pickup and, uh, a lot of devastation in the vegetation. That's not as, uh, dramatic as around two forty and sooner. Those are the worst hit homes collectively, but there were individual homes here and there that suffered similar damage in the eastern part, but everybody suffered practically some sort of limb damage and it's of course a lot of, uh, wooded area out there. So, uh, the cooperation of mayors of Choctaw and Harrah were terrific and we were working through a plan and we're going to plan to get back together again this afternoon on how to go forward. Uh, Senator Langford and Governor Stitt were both in touch with me throughout the day. I appreciate district one being willing to loan us their air curtain because that will clearly be necessary. The citizens have already moved forward without any directive. They've just taken the initiative to load up the bar ditches, so we have an enormous, um, problem ahead of us to, to the extent based on past experience, which you will recall, I would assume we will be months just with what is already there in terms of, um, I was reminding everybody yesterday, I think we have eight dump trucks to, to, to facilitate. So we will probably be trying to work with good Samaritan groups and others who are willing to assist us to get some of this moved to some of the, uh, sites that will accept vegetation in hopes that we can eliminate our burden to have to solely bear that and getting those out of the bar ditch, which will be essential for road maintenance and drainage issues. Uh, but we don't have that planned together just yet. The governor's assured me that he will work to get the DEQ permits expedited so that we can get burn permitting cleared and the, um, Senator is working with trying to get us, uh, qualifying for FEMA relief in the event we can keep tabs on all this stuff for some sort of reimbursement. There is some question about whether or not, how that's going to be done. There's maybe new technology that FEMA intends to deploy this time around. And so for any citizens or news that might be listening online to this meeting, we are in position to start responding immediately, but we are not wanting to misstep and create a problem with the FEMA calculations. And so they have asked for a small delay here while we, uh, quantify the damage, which of course could be added to potentially today and that would impact it as well. But, uh, we do not want to mess with that threshold in the event we did qualify, but it's not provable because so much of it has already been displaced. So I just wanted to offer that for a public reasoning for why you don't see us moving already out there. And hopefully we'll have some of those answers as Mr. Barnes indicated soon.
I believe that's well stated, Commissioner. And as a reminder, we do not have a disaster declaration in place yet. That is what's going on with the gathering of preliminary damage assessments. Uh, they have changed the thresholds of late. We're looking at over eight million dollars for the state of Oklahoma, which would have to be met. However, our portion of that in Oklahoma County, if I'm not mistaken, is about two point three million dollars. And in surveying some of the damage yesterday, I personally don't believe that's going to be an issue. Some of the properties that were totally destroyed, there's a couple of those properties that almost combined could make that, uh, threshold, so we'll be watching for that. The process is preliminary damage assessment. We make recommendations to the state office. State office recommends to the governor. Governor, if in agreement, then, uh, moves to the federal side and we wait a decision from them and hopefully that will be in our favor. In the meantime, it's important that any operation at county that's involved in this, including the preventative measures, law enforcement, fire rescue, all that in advance of the declaration, maintain documentation as to what your costs have been. It's particularly important at the highway districts for any remedial actions you took, uh, clearing roadways, those kinds of things. That's an important piece.
I guess one other thing, uh, what the down limbs brought a lot of down power lines, an, an excessive amount, more than usual in this type of a tornatic episode. And so one of the big challenges was to make sure each of those neighborhoods were disconnected and weren't live wires. So we weren't able to even send our crews in to clear roads just to get traffic through because of the risk of the live wires. So that was another reason the public might be frustrated and why we're not out there moving big trees that fell across roads. It's because it's not been deemed safe to do so yet.
That's absolutely correct. We have an advantage in the rural area says the houses are not quite as densely packed. So when an event like this occurs, you typically have fewer number of homes impacted, so that's to our advantage. But as you said, the power line issues in the rural areas are significant and so much of the debris is intertwined with the power lines that are down and it did prohibit significantly forward operations yesterday. And the Horseshoe Lake, uh, power facility is significantly compromised. They're having lots of issues around it, including just access to it, and that further compounds this issue. So there's a lot of moving parts, a little bit of a different twist on the event this time.
Any other questions or statements? I appreciate the update and I'm assuming we're going to recess this year after citizen participation.
Thank you.
Any citizens to be heard? Is there a motion to recess?
Motion to recess to ten o'clock.
Say ten, yeah.
Did you say ten?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 David, if you'll go down and get Mr. Whitworth moving and if you guys want to go down and go ahead and start listening, that'd be great. Or you can sit here and listen to us talk about parking garages. I mean. it's your choice.
Sorry.
Joe?
Rookie mistake.
Those high dollar new supposed to be almost indestructible power lines out there in eastern Oklahoma County? Those big round metal concrete buildings? That were all the ones that are up and down Luther. They're all over in my parents' yard.
Everybody in?
In.
Okay, I'll call the P B A together. All three trustees are present. It was properly posted November first. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of October thirty? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that handled? Okay, is there a motion to approve the claims? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And this is again the companion item you spoke of earlier?
It is. And just a few things I forgot to say earlier. There's three buildings on that site and there's been some confusion about that. So the building we call A is for the Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office. The building we call C is for emergency management. And then the building B will be shared by emergency management and a future continuing operations for all county officers site. It won't be built out. That's a future project, but there will be space for it. Also, the only thing not included in this campus project is Thirty-seventh Street. It's to the north of the intersection. It'll be the new entrance into this particular site. And District One's been working with the city on interlocal agreements. I don't think they've gotten very far at this point to build that Thirty-seventh Street. So it's something all three offices might be aware of. Maybe a shared effort, I'm not sure, but we don't have to decide that today. But before we open the facility in a year and a half, we need to build that piece of road.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any citizens for the P B A? Board comments, new business? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.